Thank you all for joining us this evening. We are so excited to introduce a great new approach to city planning to you this evening. You are all invited here tonight to learn about a new approach to land use planning called Columbus Citywide Planning Policies, also referred to as a cool name, C2P2. The goal of C2P2 is to provide a foundation for future neighborhood planning and development review. With us tonight are Councilmember Emmanuel Remi, who has another meeting to attend, Director Steve Shoney, who's the Director of the Department of Development, Kevin Wilder, Planning Administrator, Mark Jevillis, Planning Assistant Administrator, and Jackie Yeoman, Planning Manager. Tonight's meeting will begin with a presentation and end with a time for questions, and we will have about 20 minutes for questions during that time. I'm excited about the opportunity to bring C2P2 to the neighborhoods of Columbus. And as the first update to citywide planning policy in 25 years, C2P2 will establish a consistent approach to neighborhood planning to help guide the city's next generation of growth for the next 25 years. And I will now hand it over to Director Shoney.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. First of all, let me begin by thanking all of you. All of you are volunteers on the ground for us every day, more importantly, multiple evenings, taking your time to make sure that we're doing our job as well as we can. So I not only want to thank you for coming out tonight, but thank you for coming out, whether it's every Monday night, every Wednesday night, every Thursday, Tuesday, whatever it is, that you're coming out and doing your work in the community. Thank you very much for doing that. What I'm going to review, I'm going to review a few things. I am probably going to, in no way, shape, or form, follow the slides that they've prepared for me, because you can read, you're all intelligent people, you can read, I want to talk to you a little bit more about really why we're going. But what we're going to do today is we're going to talk about how we're looking forward, not just as a city, but also as a city, and then also how we're looking forward and how that's going to be reflected in our planning processes going forward. To get there, we got to talk a little bit about the old approach. We're going to talk about the new C2P2 approach. We're going to talk about our timeline, and we're going to talk about our next steps. Who's doing the clickers? Is that those guys? Oh, I have it. See, there we go. So, looking back since 1980, believe it or not, we've added about 300,000 new residents to the city of Columbus since 1980, and we've added about 50 square miles of landmass. The city in 1980 was a significantly different place than where we are today. We've got neighborhoods that have regrown, we've got neighborhoods that are brand-new. We've also had some neighborhoods that have depopulated. We've had some neighborhoods that have depopulated and then repopulated. It's a significantly different city than it was in 1980. In a lot of ways, what's not different is the planning framework that we're operating under, in terms of how we do our plans and how we've done our plans. So, looking forward, what do we see is changing over the next, over the next 30 years? And really, I left my favorite prop on the table, which is my cellphone, and I think most of you have heard me speak at various things, and I talk about this all the time. The way that people are living today has changed a lot. And honestly, because of the way that people look at their phone versus their car and want to make a choice differently than they used to, you know, I still remember hauling this great big old bag phone to the car and sticking the antenna on top, and back then, you didn't have to really make that choice. But 10 years ago, this amazing thing came out called an iPhone that started to fundamentally change the way that people think about how they live, and it boils down to a difference in the relationship between a person and their car and a person and their phone. And the choice is that people want to have the option of not simply being stuck to their car, which really does hearken back to the way that people lived before 1950-something or 60-something, depending on where you want to draw it. And so, we need to take that 1980s approach, 1970s approach to planning, the forward-looking 1960s approach, and really rethink it. And in a city of our size, there's some challenges to do that, but it's imperative that we do it now, because we are looking at, because things have changed and because the places that weren't in vogue 50 years ago are becoming back in vogue, we need to think about that today. Of the, we project that Central Ohio could, well, we don't, the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Agency projects that the region could grow by about a million people over the next 30 years, and we think probably about half of that could be in the city, without us having territorial growth like we had over the last 30 years. That's going to mean some changes in how people live in terms of their housing. There'll be an increase in single-person households, there'll be an increase in older households. We're aging and we're getting younger at the same time. An increased desire for rental units, more mixed-use neighborhoods, more transportation options, and frankly, one of the big things that we face is challenges of affordability. When you have increased demand for housing, if you don't increase the housing stock, prices are going to rise. And so, we need to address that as a city. And then, as I talked about, transportation, we have to look at a future where we're less dependent upon owner-occupied, owned, single occupancy vehicles, meaning cars that you own yourself. I don't think we're going to end up with a bunch of driverless cars flying around the city, you know, hovering, we're not all going to ride bikes, but we're going to have people who do a little bit of everything. We're going to have private services that use your phone and the phone that somebody is 10 blocks, somebody who lives 10 blocks away and figures out how to pick you up from a bus rapid transit line and get you to your house, back and forth to work, all connected faster than you can drive there, and cheaper. That's the future that we're going to have. Whether there's someone driving either of those vehicles, I don't know, I don't care, but we are going to have different kinds of options, and we got to plan for that. And we've got to do this all in the context that feeds economic development and make sure that we have jobs and opportunities for all of our residents. I'm making sure that I don't go too far beyond my slides and that I get to actually say what I want to say instead of what they're telling me to say, so hold on just a second. So, here's, there's a lot of words on these slides. Here's the bottom line. Right now, we've got a mishmash of plans across all of our different neighborhoods that were built at different times with the state-of-the-art thinking that we had at the time that plan was built. But how many plans do we have, Kevin?
Over 40.
We have over 40 neighborhood plans. How many planners do we have?
Dedicated to planning.
Yes.
Those kinds of plans, you know, like two.
Okay. So, we have two or three planners who are dedicated to managing and updating those kinds of plans. That doesn't work. But we have, what we're coming to you with today is an idea and an option for our neighborhoods to get the updated state-of-the-art thinking about how we have development and be able to speed through the process so that we're more efficient in what we do, and we're giving neighborhoods around the city an easier way to become updated with the current thinking in terms of how planning happens. So, that's what C2P2 is. I'm going to let Kevin get into the details and talk about how, oh, I got one more slide. Part of the challenge for C2P2, and I think, I know this, I'm going to use the D-word, the density word, we have to think about how we're growing and living with each other as a city. And there's one thing I want to say about density. When I talk about density, a lot of times, people immediately think that we're going to have skyscrapers on every street, we're going to look like Manhattan. No. In 1960, well, today, we're really excited about reaching the point where 9,000 people live in downtown. In 1960, 30,000 people lived in downtown. If we achieve the densities that we had in 1960, we can add that million, that million, or half a million people within our existing boundaries. When we talk about more density, we're not talking about some futuristic thing where people are flying in cars or, oh gosh, what was the name of the city in Black Panther? Trying to remember the name. Yeah, we're not talking about like, looking like Wakanda, where they've got this massive, no, we're talking about looking like things at a level of density that's back to what we've historically been at. And so, we think we've got a path forward with our planning department to help put in place the tools we need to shape the development. One other thing I want to say is, we don't have, we don't have the ability to control development, we have the ability to use tools to shape it and give neighborhoods the opportunity to have a voice in that as well. So, that's what I wanted to say upfront. I think that's mostly what, most of what the team wanted me to say. So, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin and let him get into the details.
It's great to see everybody here tonight. It's very gratifying. We've met with a lot of you one-on-one, trying to get the word out and explain things, and we're glad to see that some of you came back to hear more about it. Director Shoney talked about the way we've done things in the past, and we do, we have, I think it's 41 adopted area plans. That's really a lot for any community to try to maintain currency with. It's just, it's, it's not only a lot, it doesn't really make a lot of sense based on the geographies that have evolved with area commissions and civic associations, because often they don't match. But what we've done with land use planning, what it, what it means in Columbus, sorry, I'm not clicking forward, is that we're working with community stakeholders to develop recommendations, plans that would help guide how we respond to, how we direct development proposals. And we work together in doing that, and then we work together with the private sector in responding to proposals. The past plans, when I first came to the city, it's been a long time, dealt with a lot of different things. You know, we had plans that spoke to code enforcement and refuse collection, lifelong learning. You know, these are great topics, but they shouldn't be in your long-range land use plan. That's not where you find your motivation for lifelong learning, I hope. And so, over time, we've figured out what we really need to focus on, which is land use and urban design, and that's what our plans have increasingly been focused on. We have these tools, again, for the communities, for ourselves to work with, and we're doing this at the same time that things like the Recreation Parks Master Plan is being done, the city's been working on a new transportation plan, we have an age-friendly Columbus effort. So, there are a lot of parallel efforts that are going on on a regional level. The problem that we really have with the approach that we've been taking is that because we can't sustain the currency of 40-plus area plans, we have, this is a very time-consuming process to update them, 18 months, maybe a couple of years, depending on the complexity of it, and we have plans that are, in some cases, over 20 years old. And those plans, and those areas that have those plans, don't have the benefit of updated plan policies. We have inconsistent plan boundaries, I mentioned earlier. We have some area commissions that have three or four plans in them. And because of the resource limitations we have, you know, that's not going to get a lot better unless we change how we do things. And so, I'm going to introduce Jackie Yeoman, so, because many of you have already met Jackie, and she's going to talk about the new approach. I'm the old person, she's the new person, and she's going to explain that.
Thank you, everyone, for being here again tonight. So, it is a little bit tricky to turn your own slides, I think you have to remember. So, tonight, as Councilmember Page announced at the beginning, we are here to talk about our new approach, which are titled the Columbus Citywide Planning Policies. We also refer to it as C2P2. And C2P2 is designed to provide best practices in planning for all neighborhoods of Columbus. The policies are designed to guide our next generation of growth, which Director Shoney was speaking to us about, and they've really been developed over the last 20-plus years of area planning. One caveat to a saying that they apply to all neighborhoods, at this time, C2P2 is not designed to apply to historic districts or design review areas, and this is because those areas already have a more detailed level of review than the rest of the city of Columbus. And then, C2P2 will also provide area-specific land use plans for each area. So, what are the benefits of C2P2? We really believe that the goal and benefit of C2P2 is to provide consistent, up-to-date policies for every area in the city of Columbus. As Kevin and Director Shoney both said, right now, we have a situation where some areas that have a recent plan adopted have our most up-to-date best practices, while other plans are lagging behind, and they might not be bad, bad policies, but they're just not the most up-to-date and best practices that we can offer. So, we want to provide an ability for every area to be on the same page and have the most beneficial policies for reviewing land use plans, land use planning and design of development proposals. This will provide clear and predictable policies for the community, property owners, and developers. It will support housing and job options for a growing population, and which will also support transportation options by guiding the growth in ways that can support increased transit options and other transportation options. And then, again, the primary benefit of C2P2 is by able, being able to have regular updates that can apply citywide. So, C2P2 includes four primary elements. It's very similar to land use plans that we already have adopted within the city of Columbus. The Northwest Plan was adopted in 2016, is our most recent area plan that was adopted prior to us developing the Columbus Citywide Planning Policies framework. And if you looked at the Northwest Plan and you looked at the draft policies that you have in your packet, they're probably 99% the same. They're very, very similar. We made just a couple of updates before providing this draft packet to you. And so, the policies themselves are not new policies, but it's the approach that we're taking that is new. And that's just all, a little bit of background to say that the four elements of C2P2 include guiding principles, which are visionary statements that provide the foundation for the rest of the policies and guidelines; design guidelines, which speak to how a development looks. So, it's going to talk about the placement of buildings and the placement of parking, landscaping, screening, those types of elements; land use policies, which speak to how a site is actually used, so whether it's an office or residential; and then, land use plans, which are developed with each area specifically, and each land use plan will have area-specific policies to address what is needed for your area. And just as a brief overview, so this is true of our existing area plans, and it will also be true for the citywide planning policies. Just as it's said in their name, these are just city policy. They are not going to change the zoning code, and they're not going to replace or become city code. They are policies that are used by the community and by city staff to review rezoning and variance cases. So, that's just really helpful to understand when you're thinking about how these policies will be put into place. And an example of this would be if your community had a school or a church that was recommended for institutional in your land use plan, and a proposal came forward, say that institution closed, and a proposal came forward for a commercial development or a residential development, these policies would allow you to be able to look at that proposal and evaluate whether it's appropriate for your community. It would give you tools and guidelines to review what you're looking at, and if it's an appropriate site for what they're proposing, and it will also give you design guidelines to be able to comment on how the site itself is designed. So, that's just one example of how these policies would be used in your community. And now, I'm just going to get into a little bit more in-depth of what's included. So, the first element are guiding principles, and as I've already said, these are big-picture ideas that express how we think the city of Columbus should develop over the next 25 years, and they serve as a foundation for land use planning and design review. The guiding principles support density on primary corridors, which in turn supports transit and transportation options, and guides the growth that we know is coming to the city of Columbus. It also supports existing office and industrial uses, and also supports the preservation of sites that we know would be really great sites for new office and industrial uses in order to be able to help create jobs for the city of Columbus. It supports neighborhood retail and high-quality design to help enhance your existing neighborhoods. And then, very briefly, I'm going to walk through the three guiding principles, and I just want to point out again that all of the draft Columbus Citywide Planning Policies are in your packets, so I just encourage you to read those when you go home. You're probably not going to read them tonight, but at some time in the next couple of weeks to read through those, and then just reach out to us if you have any questions or comments or concerns. We're definitely happy to talk about these further with everyone. So, the first guiding principle is healthy and complete communities. The second is guided growth and sustainable development. And the third is design and character. The second element of C2P2 are design guidelines. Again, these are going to guide the placement and design of development proposals that come to your community, and it's really how the development should look. So, these are very, very important when you're reviewing development proposals, and we know that some areas right now do not have design guidelines, or the design guidelines are very outdated or very minimal. And so, we see this as one of the really big benefits of having C2P2 applied citywide. So, the design guidelines will address both residential and commercial properties. They're also going to talk about things like including open space in a development, how much parking should be provided, and where the parking should be located; connectivity, which talks about how developments should connect to each other between streets and sidewalks; and then, if a project should have landscaping or buffering or screening, and where that's appropriate, and how it should look; natural resource preservation, and also graphics. The third element of C2P2 are land use policies. These are the actual policy text that are matched up with the land use maps that we will work on with you, each area specifically to develop the maps, and those maps tie directly to the land use policies. So, there's a category for every type of land use, and you can see the list on the screen, but essentially residential, commercial, mixed-use, employment centers, et cetera. And then, finally, the last element of C2P2 is the land use plan. These are developed with each area specifically, so we'll work with your community to develop the land use plan. It will include a recommended land use map, which will have every single parcel, every single site in your entire area with a land use recommendation, which will be tied back to the policies that are citywide. So, the map on the screen is an example of what that map would look like, and that is of the southeast area. We just recently, we've been recently working with both the Far East, Southeast, and South London areas to draft land use plans for those three areas at this time, and actually, last night, the Greater Southeast Area Commission voted to support their proposed land use plan. So, that's an example of what a map would look like. These land use plans will also include area-specific policies. So, we recognize that while there are citywide policies, which is what we're proposing, we know that each area will still have unique situations and will require area-specific policies. So, we're not, we're not in any way trying to take away the uniqueness of areas or having policies that address the uniqueness of area, it's just that we also recognize that a large majority of the policies can and will benefit areas citywide. And then, we can work with you individually to determine what additional policies your area might need. And then, finally, just to wrap up, again, the benefits that we see of C2P2 for the community is that this is going to provide every area with up-to-date current land use policies for your rezoning and variance case review. We know this is just one set of tools that your community needs. We recognize that there are a lot of other tools that you need, but we still think that this is very, very important, and we want to make sure to have all of you have the most up-to-date best practices that are available. Finally, we just want to say that we do recognize that community engagement's very important in this, and so, while we're talking about citywide policies, we will be incorporating in-depth engagement whenever there's an update to the citywide policies, and that will include a large array of stakeholders. So, we'll include all of you as area commissioners or civic association members, it'll also include the private sector, and we'll include community members that maybe aren't regularly attending meetings, but we want to try to get as many people involved as possible. So, now, I'm going to turn it back to Kevin to talk about our timeline and public engagement.
Okay. Thank you. So, some of you may be wondering about the area-specific policies, and an example of that in the South London plan that we're just working on with some commissioners that are here in the room, it's always good to see you guys, is the fact that in South London, we have a vacant rail corridor that goes from South London all the way into Northland, north of 161, and that's privately held, but there's concern that that could be fragmented. And so, the plan really recognizes the importance of trying to preserve that for the broader good, maybe a transportation corridor, and that's not the kind of situation that you're going to encounter citywide. And so, we reflected that in that plan. We've also talked in that plan about the importance of Hudson Street as a connection between North and South London, and the opportunity to use an urban commercial overlay to improve development standards along that corridor. And so, you know, those are going to vary by area as we get into the work that is involved in the land use plans. So, next steps. You're probably at this point wondering, okay, we've been talking about this, what does it mean for us? What is it that we would be doing? My eyes aren't good enough to look across the room, so I'm going to look at my own sheet, but there are two steps in the, in the adoption process and support process. We are hoping to move towards city council, to city council this summer before their break, asking for their support for the broader C2P2 basis for moving forward plans, and we're going to be asking for your support as we do that. But the first step is in early adoption is for those of you who have older plans, who don't have design guidelines that you feel are really getting the job done, to decide to support, to basically ask for us to apply those design guidelines in your areas. You don't have to do that, that's your choice, but we want to give you that option. And if you choose to do that, we'll be talking, I'll be covering that in a little more detail in a couple of slides. The second step is when we would get back to your community to update your land use map. Many of you have land use maps that are older. Things have changed, it's time, we need to, we need to update those maps, reevaluate the future of your community. And so, early adoption is the design guidelines. Complete adoption is already having the design guidelines and then getting your land use map updated. Timeline to do these things, we're really focusing in 2018 on getting this basis established. You know, we do have three communities that have been kind of pilots, Far East, Southeast, and South London, so they're kind of a little bit further ahead, but we're working really to establish this framework broadly this year in 2018. 2019, we know that many of you may have ideas or things that you would like us to be considering in terms of land use policy and design guidelines, and we're going to be using that time to really bring together community stakeholders to give those policies and guidelines their first real review and update. And then, in 2020, the time I think many of you are really anxious for is when we would begin updating the land use plans. Again, I'm not forgetting my, not remembering my slides. So, this, this presentation is going to be on the website tomorrow, so thank you for your patience. Okay, next steps. If I could ask you, in the right side of your packet, there's a yellow sheet, and this might be most helpful if we just look at that. Okay. So, again, action step one is deciding that you'd like to support C2P2. This is a little bit different than the first slide, so this is not the adoption step one and step two. This is action steps one and two for you as you leave the meeting. The first action step is we're asking for you to let us know if you support this approach. We hope that you do, we think it makes a lot of sense, and we think it's the most effective way of getting to you the tools that you need and that we need to respond to growth and development. But we're asking that you would, you would provide that support so that we can share that with city council as a basis to move forward, and we're asking You don't have to use that letter, but it's there if you want it, because May allows us then to move to Development Commission in June and to City Council in July. Then the second step is for you to consider early adoption of the design guidelines. You don't have to do that, but if you're in a position that you would like to be able to use those design guidelines, if your plan is older and you think you would benefit from that, we'd love to be able to extend that to you. These are the design guidelines, and we've also included a letter of support for that. If you want to do that, we've got a comment form that asks for us to get in touch with you to give you additional information. We know that it can take a while to sort of work through this. This presentation's going to be on the website. We will give you as much support as we can. I think the key here is that there's this opportunity to get this done, we hope, by July, when we go to council. We're going to do it again. So if you're, if you have a commission or a group that says, you know, this might be okay for us, but we need more time than that, that's okay. But we want to get as many people as we can in this first round, especially because some of you have plans that have not been updated for a long time. I'm looking over at Jackie. Am I missing things?
No, that's it. I just wondered if you just want to emphasize that the first request is just support of the general idea.
Okay. So, so yes, just to emphasize, the first request is really basically getting your feedback on our idea. We'd love to have your support moving forward. It's helpful for us to know that. This is the first time, I've been with the city for 31 years as a planner, and this is the first time we've ever had this kind of group of people talking to all this, so many leaders at one time. I think it's great, and, you know, we've worked really hard to get this, to get to this point because we feel like it's that important. And, you know, I do want to acknowledge the staff that works with me in planning because they've worked so hard on this, and Mark Dravilis and Jackie, and we have Christopher Law in the background who's worked really hard on it as well, and he has time cards. If people like me go overtime, he holds them up. But he's, he's done much more than that. So I think at this point, we're going to move to questions, and Councilmember Page is going to lead that part of the conversation, and I know there's a microphone at the back of the room, and we're going to ask you, if you have a question, to please go to that because this is being recorded, and we want to be able to hear everybody on the tape. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kevin, and thank you all for your presentation. I know that there was a lot of information that was given to you all, and that's why we went to open it up for questions. And we're going to operate a little differently than what we normally do at a public hearing. We don't have any speaker slips, so anyone who has a question, please feel free to go to the mic at the back of the room. If you could state your name, and it's the area commission or civic association that you are representing, that would be greatly appreciated. And then one of the four individuals here will answer the questions. I'm sure I don't know the answer, so I'm just going to stand here and smile during your question.
My name is Alice Porter, Northeast Area Commission. And in all of your profiles and graphs and charts, you didn't mention infrastructure. We have, you know, in our area, we have a problem with infrastructure, but you didn't mention that. So how are you going to go to the next step if the infrastructure is not there?
I'm going to respond to that. I think a couple of things to point out. One is that there will be, we do work with other departments as we look at planning issues in different neighborhoods, and I think development review automatically involves review and engagement by the Public Service Department and Public Utilities Department, both of whom do parallel planning exercises. So there are citywide efforts in the way of transportation planning that's going on. There's development review that involves those departments so that they can make sure that development's working in the context of traffic and so on. But it's also the case that the things that I think most matter in terms of development and planning and infrastructure are when we get to the stage that we're updating the land use plans for individual areas, and that's, that's definitely part of what we would consider. They don't include recommendations about infrastructure, but they're not developed in a vacuum about that.
Hi. My name is Jokum Bean. I'm with the Northwest Area Commission, and it had been mentioned a couple of times that there's sort of a mismatch between area commission boundaries and different plan, planning zones and that sort of thing. So as part of this effort, does this plan to sort of, you know, fill in those gaps between, you know, areas that are in different planning zoning areas, areas that aren't in area commission? So I'm just curious if that would be addressed as part of this process.
Yes. So a couple of things. When we did the, just as we were finishing the Far East and Southeast planning processes, in Far East, for instance, they had, I think, three or four different plans that applied to their area. We're doing one plan, so we're syncing that up with their boundaries. If there are areas that don't have any plans, we would seek to bring them in in terms of land use, but also apply the design guidelines there. So our goal is to not have 40 plans in the future, but to have plans that work in sync with the community leadership groups that we have.
Okay. Libby Weatherholt from Clintonville Area Commission. There we go. Sorry. I guess our, our concern is when does the commission come in on this? Because there are so many times when some development is already being built, when, and we, there's no zoning, there's no nothing, so we have no input on it. And, and even for the ones where we do have input, and we talk about connectivity, but we've got all kinds of sidewalk mismatches and no, you know, sidewalks not being completed and people missing which overlay is on which, and are we going, I mean, we don't have a design review. We feel like we're at the mercy of whatever happens downtown, and many times, things have not been done correctly, and we just had a, a building built that never went through anything, and it was called a renovation, but there was like one stud left standing. And it didn't, it didn't, it's on the old type of planning. It doesn't go with the overlay. No one talked with us about what we'd like the building to look like, and so we feel like none of this is, is being taken care of at this point, and we have no way of having any input. So I am concerned about, it's wonderful to have all these policies, but it doesn't look like we're going to be given any input at all for a lot of things that, you know, I mean, we've got an entire apartment complex going up that has no variances, and so the only way we've had any kind of input is we've made nice with the developer and talked with him a little bit, but we haven't heard from him in over a year, and, and things are beginning to happen. So I, I do have concerns on this.
One, I mean, C2P2 will only apply as your adopted plan language comes into play. We use it when there's a rezoning or a variance in play, and that's what gives us the authority to comment and, and make a review of projects, and that would still be the case. So if somebody does have a buy right zoning and a given site, indeed, we oftentimes also are not able to comment on that. That being said, we feel that having citywide planning policies in place will elevate the, the role of planning and the design guidelines and hopefully allow us to catch more. Kevin made a note here that we think is really important moving forward is that we are now located, as of a couple of weeks ago, in the same building with Building and Zoning Services. We think it's going to create some really great opportunities for synergy and working with those folks. I was meeting with the, one of the zoning managers today about making sure that we have joint meetings on, on all cases we review. We have colleagues that have left our division and now work on the one-stop shop, and it's going to allow us to follow developments as they go through the, the construction process. So we're really hoping to utilize this, this new synergy in order to have a stronger impact. So we can't solve all those concerns, again, because we only have the illegal authority to review and comment on projects that, that do indeed require rezoning and variance, but we're going to hope to elevate our game with C2P2.
I just want to add, I just want to add to Mark's comments that, sorry, sat on. We know that this isn't not, this is not going to address all the issues that communities have. What we are trying to do is get to a place where it's a level ground for all areas so that, so while one community might have policies that they're able to use for the rezoning and variance cases, we have other communities where they're out of date and it's not really helping them at all. So we, again, we do recognize that this is not going to solve all of the issues that you have for your community, but we still think that for what it can do for you, that it's going to be very beneficial to have these up-to-date policies and design guidelines.
I was hoping you could clarify a little bit on the boundary question, just to be clear, for if there's an existing area plan, that boundary basically is going to go away, and then the new, say, an area commission comes to you and asks for a new plan, would the new boundary be that area commission? Is that how you're hoping to do that?
So, in the short term, nothing's going to change in terms of that plan. So we'll, the plans will all be, continue to be in place. As an area commission or major civic in the absence of an area commission, if, if a group decides to apply the design guidelines early, then we can use those design guidelines along with the community in conjunction with the existing plans and the land use guidance that they provide. But at the point that we're in a position to come back and say, let's update your land use plans, at that point, we would, we would want to work with the commission to establish a plan, a land use map that essentially covers the whole commission boundary, so that you're not, you know, trying to, this is hard for everybody, council, applicants, commissioners, staff, which one of these 40 plans applies?
And sorry, I had just one quick question as well. Is a higher priority going to be given to the oldest plans as far as getting them updated first?
We're going to, we're going to put together a schedule about how to get these things updated, and that's certainly going to be one of the, one of the key criteria.
Good evening. I'm Bill Hoffman with Forensics Hilltop. I have just one question, based upon what I've read tonight with the Columbus City Wide Plan policies. This is basically for area commissions and civic associations. What about nonprofits that want to be involved and on the grounds roots, grassroots level? Can we still fill out this and turn it in and be recognized as a, as a participant for the West Side?
I think that, you know, you can certainly fill it out, and we'd love to hear from you, and as we move forward in future to update the policies, we're going to be looking at a broad array of stakeholders, not just civic association and an area commission leadership and members, but, you know, the broader community that is impacted by the form and shape of our development. I would say that this evening's meeting isn't intended to exclude folks, but it is intended to focus on the groups that have been recognized through city code and have the responsibility of providing recommendations to city council around subjects like zoning and development. So we're going to be pestering you later on for input. In the meantime, hey, if you, if you feel like this makes sense, we'd love to hear from you, regardless of whether you're a nonprofit or an area commission.
Thank you very much.
Hi there. BJ White with the Clintonville Area Commission. Thank you again, Councilmember Page, leaders of planning and development. Appreciate this opportunity. I'd like to just go ahead and piggyback on Chairperson Weatherholt from the Clintonville Area Commission in her comments with regard to the communication at the point of permit application by developers. There needs to be an interim step of communication that, so far as we're discussing a draft plan of, and I'm assuming this is a living document, it is still in a draft phase, so there needs to be some type of interim step of communication, whether it be in the form of a policy change or at the very least courtesy given between the building department and the area commissions. I think that it's critical at that juncture, that once at permit inception, that, that piece of, of communication gap be bridged. So if this is a guiding policy opportunity, I would just welcome you to revisit that. I had a question about, you talked a little bit about density, and I really like, I don't know who used the analogy, density does not equal skyscrapers, but I am going to use that. Thank you very much. So far as, as density, how will we measure, what, by what unit of measure, how will we gauge an indicator of success that we are using these guiding principles to achieve
Well, we, most of our, or many of our current plans use the guideline of dwelling units per acre in order to gauge density, and, and several of our most recent plans recommend particular locations for higher densities and others for lower densities. And I think really our, I guess what I would say is the responses is the, the guiding principles that are presented in C2P2, that really the overall goals is that we'd have healthy retail in our neighborhoods, that our neighborhoods are supportive of transit. When we say that, we mean that the bus system, as we have it today, and future transit, really requires a certain density of people living nearby in order to make it economically viable for it to operate. So we're looking for transit-supported neighborhoods in order to allow people to get to jobs and so forth. We're looking for healthy neighborhood retail. We're looking for a variety of housing types for people to live in neighborhoods, seniors that could stay within their neighborhood their whole life and maybe move into an apartment from a home. These are things that are achieved through a level of density. We could have current corridors that maybe currently have a single-story retail building on them that might be a little tired, that could be redeveloped as, as apartments. And that needs to go through the appropriate review, of course, and design guidelines, but the, the guiding principles is how we would, would gauge that.
I'm going to, I'm going to give you a different answer. And as the, as the director, I get to do that. It's, actually, it's a great question. I don't honestly know how to answer it. I mean, there's a couple of different ways to look at it, and it's something that kind of I've been struggling with, how do we measure it? How do we know whether we're being successful or not? And the challenge when you talk about, are we being successful in density, is because good density isn't the same in every neighborhood. And so I don't want to put in place a citywide measure. While we have these principles that say we want to achieve these certain things, density along High Street and density along Broad Street are similar, but they're not the same, nor is it the same on Livingston or Main. So I'm a little hesitant to come in and, the manager in me really wants to have that measurable that I can come in and say, we are successful, we are not successful, you know, green, yellow, red. But I, that's one way I don't feel like I can do it and be fair to every neighborhood.
I think that where Mark was coming from is, I was looking for a measure that is, will you be measuring households per mile or people per mile? And so when I think of measuring it for people per mile, I think that what is of import is to understand the social demographic. So when you look at Clintonville, there's 30,000 residents of Clintonville, and the largest demographic, and this might surprise you, is between 55 and 70 years old. The second-largest demographic is between 30 and 40, and then all of the others are about in-between. So to be able to measure density and to show an indicator of success and what's working well in Clintonville, we might want to be mindful of, are we measuring households or are we measuring people? And then take into account the social demographic, age groups, and so on and so forth. And when you talk, and I like Mark's part of the answer where he talked about connectivity and public transit, because we also have a lot of people who live in the northern part of Clintonville who obtain their schooling through the Ohio School for the Deaf, Ohio School for the Blind, and a lot of people stick to that area of the community because they're, they're comfortable, they're safe, there's rehearsed commerce behaviors. So to be able to keep them there in that community where they feel safe, we want to make sure to protect, when you talk about health and wellness, we want to make sure that, to protect the, the ability and the ascertaining, and ascertaining public transit, and to make sure that our infrastructure is in good condition and that our city's right-of-ways are clear of any debris, advertising signage, and what have you. Thank you.
Steve Hardwick, I'm the Chair of the Clintonville Area Commission's Zoning and Variance Committee, but I'm really here more speaking as, I'm a volunteer member of the Columbus City Schools Facilities Committee, and I was on their master plan. Right now, they are, we are meeting to decide, to look at what schools should be closed or consolidated. If we're lucky, in the next couple of years, there's going to be meetings again on which schools to renovate, reopen, replace. Is there any coordination between the city planning and the Columbus City Schools? Because that would seem to be really important to know when you're deciding which schools to close and open.
We, we do regularly communicate with the school systems, facilities folks, the, the leadership in that part of the, part of the school system. I would also say that Columbus is in, we, we overlap with 15 school districts. And so, for us, there's, you know, depending on what part of town you're in, you know, you may be in any, any one of those 15. But yes, we, we do communicate with them. I think one of the things that, you know, Director Shoney spoke about earlier, is that our city is much less dense than it used to be. And I think that in some neighborhoods, you can see that that is manifest in terms of the impact on schools. Far fewer students in school buildings than there used to be. But we also have neighborhoods and suburban communities that have kind of gone through a whole cycle where they've, they've emptied out their schools, and then they've filled them back up again. So, you know, thankfully, this stuff happens, even though it may seem like it happens really fast, it happens incrementally enough that we can work with folks on, on issues like that.
Just, no, I don't remember seeing, I went to maybe half a dozen or dozen meetings on the Facilities Committee before the last bond issue, and I don't remember ever seeing a city planner at any of the meetings.
We do communicate with those folks. We do, we do it during workday. So, we just, I have a, I had a conversation with Ann Dorian-Lanzotti just last week, if you know Ann, she's the real estate person. Thank you.
Good evening. Hello, Council Member Page, Director Shoney. My name is Tiffany White. I'm the Chair of North Central Area Commission. I have one big concern, and then a question. My biggest concern is, once these policies are adopted, if the commission overwhelmingly, the commissions approve the adoption of this plan, how does that impact decisions made by the BCA, or council for that matter, when many times, we run into an issue that something is contradictory to our plan and still gets pushed through and put into our communities in which we don't want, or even impacts it negatively? How is this policy going to curtail that process?
So, I, I think one of the challenges we've faced over time is that with some of our plans, they've gotten out of date. And so, it's easier for developers to say, "Well, the plan's so old." And then, once you get a few plans that are old, then it's, becomes the legend that the plans are old. And so, one of the things that we hope for out of this process, and one of the reasons we want to take this to council, is so that this is an updating of the plan, and making sure that everybody understands really the principles we're, we're working from. And so, it makes the process easier for our elected officials at council, for our folks at BCA to understand, to make sure we're all singing from the same hymnal. And that's one of our hopes. It's not going to be perfect. Our crystal ball was not perfect when we create, when the team put together the C2P2, and something will come along where we didn't foresee that, and we're going to have to make a decision, and we're going to have to make a recommendation. What these policies do is they give our team the ability to say, "Here's an updated set of principles. This is how we're making our decisions." That way, you know and you can hold us accountable. Frankly, that way the developers know and they can hold us accountable, and we can look at them and say, "This is what we've said to everybody in the, hopefully, the vast majority of our neighborhoods. This is how we want to do it." And so, that level of certainty and transparency, I think, can only help the process. I don't know, Council Member, if you wanted to add anything to that?
Not too much, other than I definitely agree. From a, a council perspective, we do have outdated plans, and you have developers who are coming, and they're looking at, "Well, this area has changed," or "The city has changed." It does make the decision more difficult when you have a area commission that's not in support of it, and a developer or staff that wants to move it through. I would say that this council makeup in particular has been very sensitive to the recommendations and the needs and concerns of the area commissions. And there have been times when it's been staff disapproval, and the area commission has supported and has passed through council. And there have been much fewer times when the area commission didn't approve it, and maybe staff did, and it still passed through. So, I, I'm very excited and encouraged by, again, the current makeup of council, and I believe that this will be a, a good guiding principle, particularly when you have individuals who don't have a planning background, and don't have a zoning background, and we're looking to some updated guidelines to help guide our decisions.
And then, thank you so much. The concern that I had was, North Central, 18 months in the making, worked on their plan, their development plan specifically. It was turned over to development in the fall. We adopted the design plan prior to that, so that was already incorporated in our plan. I'm kind of concerned as to why we were not listed up there as one of the plans that you're working on currently.
We're, we're, we're anxious to work on, you know, apply C2P. We've thought about North Central, I, I mean, all of you, but North Central is a prime candidate for us for C2P2, because it's a, a plan where the design guidelines really are not currently up to snuff. And, and we're hopeful that you all will sign on as an early adopter now, because then by July, if we're lucky and council supports this effort, we could put them in place to you then. And so, we knew you were all were working on that document, really at the same time we'd been working on C2P2. And so, we were not in a position to go full-on with a North Central land use planning effort, because we were midstream with, "See, we need to get this done." The, we were working on Southeast in particular, because Bryce Tusing is the oldest, a 1990 plan. It really, it was a priority we had to get in on. And then, it really spilled into Far East because of the boundary issues we talked about. Since that plan was done, there were area commissions that formed, so we in effect had to take on that whole planning process at the same time. We tackled Linden, because the city was doing a Linden planning process, and we sort of tagged along. So, that's really how we came to be with those three plans. But trust me, we, North Central, we're, we're looking forward to working with you on it, and hoping we could sign you on here soon.
Thank you.
Good evening. Lawrence Callaway, South Linden Area Commissioner, Vice Chair. I get the air that the plan, the policy that's been developed is great, in that it meets the challenges of the city, condensing the 40 into something that's very comprehensive. But as residents and citizens, we look at how the identity of our community can be lost in something that appears to be cookie cutter. So, if we sign on to take on the policies and the guidelines, and we look at developing our communities, we're looking for some assured that we can still maintain our identity. Our South Linden community is very unique, it has its challenges, but we have an identity that we would like to keep. So, in staying that, we ask, how does what you've put together as a proposed policy in land use, are we buying a ticket that's already been sold?
No, I don't think you are. I think, in the case of South Linden, and Mark mentioned this, that the city has been working in South Linden on a community planning process. In fact, there's someone here tonight from the Neighborhood Design Center that's been working with that, on that effort. We looked at the existing South Linden plan. It was adopted in 2012, so it's really not that old. And we, we decided that, in this instance, the community had gone through all kinds of engagement as part of the broader community planning effort, which touches on a whole host of issues that we don't normally encounter in our planning work. That it was imperative that we also come alongside that, so that you could emerge from the process with having the most updated land use and design guideline guidance. But what we found was that, really, the land use plan that had been developed with your community in 2012 was not that different, we were, we didn't change it very much. And it still reflects very much what your community had asked us and worked with us to achieve in 2012. I think we also looked at the area-specific policies as another way of saying, you know, "This is distinct in Linden. These issues are not necessarily the same issues that Clintonville has, that the Southeast has." But ultimately, these are land use tools, land use and design tools. They don't define your community. You know, the people that are in this room define your community. And so many of the other things that you're doing are really more important in terms of the sense of identity. These design guidelines, for instance, are intended and designed to apply to a lot of different kinds of development. So, they will not, you will not drive from one community to the other and think everything is exactly the same. And really, I think where this matters is in the individual commissions and civic associations, and how they engage, because this is ultimately just paper, until we, we work with people and, and apply it. That's my answer, and I want to turn over here to see if anybody else has any other thoughts.
I, I was going to say something, but he got it really well. What I did actually want to say is, thank you for asking that question, because if I were in your seats, that would be my first concern, is that, you know, are we saying that every neighborhood's the same? And I, my hope is that as you read through, as you take the time to read through the principles, you can see your own community applying those principles to your situation. And if you can't, we need that feedback. Now's the time that we need that feedback. If you look at it and you say, "Okay, as I look at this with a few, without, with only putting a few kind of specific to my community provisions in there, this still doesn't let me see my community the way I want to see it," then we need to, we need to hear that. And that's part of why we want to get to you all and, and have this process. We think, obviously, we think we put enough room in there. But if you think we got it wrong, we need to hear it. So, thank you for the question.
Thank you.
We just have questions, and we will end the evening with Commissioner Neal. But of course, I'll give information so that you can follow up with the department and ask any more questions that you may have.
Mike McKay with the Westland Area Commission. Two quick questions. First, you talked earlier about there's 41 current adopted area plans. The new approach is to provide best practices for all neighborhoods and a land use plan for each area. But then, 15 minutes ago, when you were answering a question, Kevin, you said, "The plan is not to have 41 plans in the future." So, if you could clarify what you meant, and what, what we're actually doing, and what the, what we're going to end up with here.
So, I, I'm not explaining this very well, because I, ultimately, what we're trying to do is sync up our land use plans with the area commissions and civic association boundaries. And in the case of Westland, that doesn't mean much change, because you've got one plan, it matches your boundaries. But we have a commissioner here from Southeast Area Commission tonight. And in the Southeast, they've got four plans that are, make up their boundary. So, when I say we don't want 41 plans, well, no planning administrator wants 41 plans, but what we really want is to have plans that match the community areas.
The second question was, you mentioned the current process to update a plan is 18, 24 months. What are you thinking going forward?
Our goal is to, is to make that about a nine-month process. And, and again, this, this is the land use map, that really is what many of you recognize is kind of the, the core of your plans. So, nine months.
Hello, my name is Gloria Zebbs Anderson, not hyphenated. I am the President of the Argyle Park Civic Association, and I'm also retired, just recently retired, from the North Central Area Commission, so I'm still part of that area. And my biggest concern with this type of a plan guideline, there's nothing in it that addresses gentrification. And in our new plan that you have, I was co-chair for that, to make sure it got to you before I retired. We do address the challenge of gentrification. And that is done by developers. And I see this guideline as favoring developers over individual homeownership. The HUD guidelines says that you must encourage homeownership. So, we have a lot of vacant homes owned by the city and the land bank that are not available to people to purchase, or to even bid on, because they don't have the $20,000 in the bank. And you are actually encouraging developers from outside the city, outside the state, and outside of the United States. They are purchasing these houses and pushing us out. So, I think you really need to think about what this gentleman right before me said, that we need to preserve the character and the demographics of those neighbors who want to buy a home in their neighborhood for their children, their grandchildren, so that they can continue generational wealth.
So, actually, the last time I was in this room for a meeting, we had 12 experts from around the country who we asked to come into Columbus to help us look at the issues of, how do we look at neighborhoods that are starting to see interest in reinvestment that they haven't seen for decades? And look at those neighborhoods and say, "How do we encourage those neighborhoods to become or remain mixed-income neighborhoods?" So, how do we look at it? And we actually asked them to specifically look at a pretty big swath of the east side and the southeast side, specifically as kind of a test case. And what are the tools we need to put in place to be able to allow the housing that is there, that's affordable today, to stay there and remain affordable, but be improved, while allowing new investment to come in? Because the last thing I can have is a neighborhood that is stuck. I don't want neighborhoods that are stuck, because neighborhoods that are stuck and are trying to stay the same fall behind. So, what we need to find a way to do is preserve and improve that affordable housing that's there, while encouraging new investment to come in. So, that is beyond the scope of a land use plan. That is a total citywide look at how we do development, and how we encourage development, and the incentives we put in place. And when you talk about the things that literally keep me up at night, that's top of the list. Tell a joke, because I can't help myself. I don't know if any of you have kids or grandkids that have gotten into this crazy game called Fortnite on their Xbox, or, and it's a game where your kid has to build forts and try and protect themselves and be the last one standing. And it's, you know, I, I woke up the week before Christmas in a dream that my kids were not building enough affordable housing in their video game. So, it is to that level of concern that we have. And we really are, I mean, it is something that the mayor has charged us with, taking a look at, how do we make sure that we are not just encouraging investment into our neighborhoods, but that we're really focused on two things, economic mobility and building mixed-income neighborhoods. Those are, everything that we do, we put through that lens. And not, not everything's going to get us all the way there, but at the end of the day, we need to make sure that everything we're doing is taking us a step down that path. So, I hope that, I, I hope that addresses some of your questions. But we can talk, we can have a longer conversation about it. I'd love to have a longer conversation about it.
We need to.
Okay.
And one thing that I would like to add briefly, as Commissioner Neal is coming up to, is that, one thing that scares me, too, is the maintaining the uniqueness of every community, but then understanding how do we move forward. And it's not just a conversation with plans, but it's also a cultural and generational conversation, because there is this idea that millennials don't want to live in single-family homes. And I don't, I'm like right on the cusp of being a millennial, you know, but I'm like, I can't wait to buy my first house. But if you talk to individuals so younger than me, they don't necessarily want to live in a house. They don't want to have a car. And as you're thinking through this, and if you want to have communities that are not only not only diverse by, like culturally, but also by age, those are going to be things to consider. What do different generations look for in a community that they want to live in? And it's having affordable, single-family housing, but also affordable, multifamily dwelling units, too. Commissioner Neal.
My name is Eileen Neal, and I'm President of Allen Creek Acres and member of the Far South Area Commission. We are very excited about having best practices within neighborhoods. We're open to that. But I want to tell you an experience that we're living through on Allen Creek Corridor. We have land use that is occupied by salvage companies and landfill companies. My question to you is, how do you move forward to encourage investment in those areas when they have those unsightly sites surrounding the community, which will eventually surround any businesses you bring in there? I am concerned about the lack of growth based upon what currently exists there. No one is going to want to develop space there. Now, I'll tell you where development is taking place. It's taking place on Allen Creek, Williams Road, going south toward Rick and Barker. We see a lot of movement there, between Refugee Road, Performance Parkway, let's just say to Integrity Drive, if you know the Allen Creek Strip. There's no development there. So we, as a community, want to see growth, but since these sites are there, we have to come up with a new vision as to how we move forward with those sites and communities. Otherwise, all the best practices in the world aren't going to help. So I'd like to know what you think about that, and what is your vision, because you have to have a new vision going forward so that we don't continue to make the same mistakes we continually make over the past 20 years. Yes, it's zoned for landfills and salvage, but does that mean that you have to continually exacerbate that site and use it for that? That's our question as a community.
And think, I didn't think Kevin was going to want to take that, but I'll take that. You know, it's interesting, actually, just on Monday, we had our entire senior staff drive, actually, literally the route, I think pretty much literally the route you just laid out, to look at the development patterns on that corridor, and look at, you know, what, essentially, we went down Parsons, actually, all the way down Parsons, and we came back all the way up Allen Creek. I've spent enough time over on Marion Road to know what the situation is. Really, there's two strategies. One is consistently looking for better ways, better ways to do enforcement on those activities that are there already, and we don't get it right. We still don't get it right. We're doing better than we did in the past, but we've got more work to do. So we just drove by whatever, the landfill that I think is right across.
Picking Bell.
Yep.
Yes.
And the mounds are up again. And, you know, we're hearing rumors that they're going to come in and want to talk about how they're going, how good they're going to do going forward now. Okay, whatever. We've got to stay vigilant in those things. I think we're doing better in code enforcement since we've gotten a specialist who just concentrates on those kinds of properties. As you know, the code enforcement process takes a long time. So Strategy One is you got to be on it with the enforcement for those that are already there. And then I think, when it comes to new development proposals, it's making sure that where we have the ability to pressure them to do better, we do. And I think we've started doing that. I think when we get proposals for something that's zoned industrial, and they have the option of putting in whatever, we look to find way, we look for pressure points that we can to make it better. We can't force a rezoning, we can't say that if you have the right to do something in a place, you can't do it. At some level, we have the zoning that we have. But we always are looking for ways to pressure them to do better. Those are the two strategies that we've got. It does impact future development patterns. I think that continued investment in infrastructure around those neighborhoods helps. And then, you know, specifically that corridor, it's an area that we look at as an important investment in our future transportation corridors. Rick and Barker, the Rick and Barker area, Obeds, Groveport, City of Columbus, all the way down into Lincoln County, is only going to continue to grow as a job center. And if we can find ways to connect that job center to the neighborhoods to the north of it in an affordable way, that helps our community in so many ways. It helps folks get to jobs in ways that are affordable and reduces the cost of having that job, which then reduces your housing costs, reduces, increases your effective income. And it makes those neighborhoods around it more attractive so that when somebody's thinking about what to do with that land, if you have a neighborhood that is connected to a job center, that is, that neighborhood has a much higher chance of being successful. And then the development pressure becomes, one of the principles we have in here, is preserving properties that are zoned for job creation as job creation. There are going to be places where we look at that principle and say, "That principle doesn't necessarily apply here," and some of what you're talking about, where you have the opportunity, where you're starting to see interest in housing in a place that's zoned industrial, and there are places where we might say, "You know what, that actually should be housing." And those are the conversations we're going to have on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, I would again like to thank you all for attending this evening, and thank you for the work that you're doing in each of your communities. And to address your question again about gentrification, I would say, one thing to keep in mind, too, is just making sure that your neighborhood is very vocal throughout this process, but as you see the development coming. And I always use the Southern Gateway or Southern Renaissance as one of, I think, the greatest examples of making sure that the uniqueness and the people who lived on the south side stayed there throughout this Renaissance, throughout the rehabilitation. And that was a lot, because the community worked very closely with individuals at this table in the city to make sure that their neighborhood, the people who were there, the people who called the south side their home, that they were able to stay. And again, I think that has been one of the greatest areas that has really been able to defy, I guess, the odds of gentrification, and have utilized their voices, their community input, to make sure that their community moved forward, but again, people were able to stay in their homes. So again, I appreciate you all coming this evening. There's one last slide, there you go. You can find additional materials on that website, and also email c2p2@columbus.gov or call 614-645-8834. I'd like to thank the Department of Development for your participation here and for all the work that you've put into this plan. Also, we had individuals from Council President Harden's office, as well as Councilmember Elizabeth Brown's office, and then neighborhood liaisons, I know Chris Sewell was here, David Hui from our Neighborhoods Department. So I thank you all for coming, and have a wonderful evening.